Good evening, everyone, to council members, members of the public that are online, and welcome to our regular council meeting of Tuesday, November the 12th, 2024. The mayor is under the weather this evening, so I am going to be chairing this meeting. If everybody could please stand for the national anthem. Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest and the nature thereof? No, seeing none. Except the agenda, we are going to be removing the...
Yeah, so through you, Mr., or Ms. Deputy Mayor. So we're going to be removing the in-camera, being that the mayor is not here this evening. He would like to be in on that conversation, so it will be as amended, as the agenda.
Okay, Counselor Madden, accept the agenda as amended, please.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, you should be practicing that.
Seconded by Counselor Massey, the council of the township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda, the agenda as amended for the regular meeting of council on Tuesday, November 12th, 2024.
Thank you for that. Are there any other additions or deletions? Seeing none, all in favor. Carried, thank you. Adoption of the previous minutes, the regular meeting of council minutes on Monday, October the 28th. Counselor Massey, please.
Thank you, Ms. Deputy Mayor Williams. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Cadell, that the minutes of the following meeting be adopted as circulated, regular meeting of council minute, Monday, October 28th, 2024.
Thank you, Counselor Massey, all in favor of the motion? Carried, thank you. We have no delegations this evening. Staff reports, we'll start with the administrative department. AD 2024-07, the 2024 M E C G update. Counselor Manley, put it on the table, please.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Cadell, that the minutes of the following meeting be adopted as circulated, regular meeting of council minute, Monday, October 28th, 2024.
Thank you, Counselor Massey, all in favor of the motion? Carried, thank you. We have no delegations this evening. Staff reports, we'll start with the administrative department. A D 2024-07, the 2024 M E C G update. Counselor Manley, put it on the table, please.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Madden, that the council of the township of North Glengarry accepts staff report A D 2024-07, 2024 Municipal Emergency Control Group for information purposes only.
Thank you, Counselor. Jenna, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So this report is just to update council on the group's 2024 activities. Over the last eight months, the M E C G convened three times. The first meeting was held in March, where we reviewed the emergency response and the bylaw, as well as we appointed the C E M C, the E I O, as well as their alternates. During the Public Education Week in May, we posted social media posts regarding disaster preparedness for any seasons throughout the website, as well as Facebook and Instagram. In our second meeting, that was held in June, that's where we reviewed the critical infrastructure and hazard identification and risk analysis. Like I said, we went through them line by line, and we updated where we felt we needed to. And in September, we held our tabletop exercise, which was a fictitious emergency that was declared, due to severe flooding that destroyed building caused by failed infrastructure. The staff at the Glengarry Memorial Hospital also joined us via Zoom. It was actually kind of neat to interact, as they ran their tabletop at the same time. So that way, we were able to discuss the events as they unfolded. I bring this report forward because it is the C E M C's duty to submit an annual report to the Emergency Management Ontario Ministry of Community and Safety and Correctional Service annually by December 31st, where the attached bylaw, as well as the above-mentioned meetings, were conducted. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you for your report, Jenna. Any questions or comments for Jenna? Jenna, I have a question about the tabletop exercise you just did with the counties. Is that what you were referring to, the flooding? No, that was the other.
No, we did one, we ran one individually in September. It was held at our E O C. We did do one where Misha, the E I O, and I attended with the counties, and that was actually really well done as well. I forgot to mention that in there, where we kind of made sure that all the lower-tier municipalities had open connections to the counties if anything doesn't work.
So it was a worthwhile exercise?
Yeah.
And everyone participated?
The other municipalities did, but since we had already ran ours, and just due to the timing, we unfortunately didn't get too many participants, but like I said, we already had done ours, so we were compliant for the year.
Okay, well, thank you for your report, Jenna.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, all in favor of the motion? Carried, thank you. On to A D 2024-08, the 2025 council meeting schedule. Brian, please put the motion on the table.
Thank you, Counselor Cadell. It's moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Manley, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives staff report A D 2024-08, 2025 council meeting schedule, and that the council of the township of North Glengarry approves the 2025 meetings of council as per the attached schedule.
Thank you, Counselor. Go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So we, there's a couple of things that we change for this year. We did accommodate for any holidays, different conferences in the council meeting agenda. You'll note that our budget meeting is January 7th, so that's pretty early this year. The reason being is our Director of Public Works is going to Australia for a month, so we wanted to allow him to do that, and because he has the biggest operating and capital budget, it's important that Tim's here. So the new treasurer and I, Zoe, and I decided that we would accommodate Tim to do that, because it's only something that he does.
That's so nice of you.
I know, so he'll owe us big time. We also changed some of the committee of the halls, so it didn't make sense to do one in March, being that we just had our budget meeting pretty much like seven weeks before. So we moved that into April, and then we just sort of shifted the other committee of the halls from there. Nothing else really significant other than that for any of the council agenda for next year.
Thank you for that, Sarah. Does anybody have any questions or comments or concerns? Yes, go ahead, Counselor Madden.
Just these will, these will go into our calendar, or will be sent out as a calendar?
Yeah, so once approved, yeah, once approved tonight, they'll be going in your calendar, and then you'll be able to rearrange all the rest of your life around that, so.
Okay, excellent. In that case, all in favor of the motion? Carried and opposed, thank you. On to Treasury Department, we have D R 2024-05, Drainage Services Proposal. Counselor Madden, please put it on the table.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives report D R 2024-05, Drainage Services Proposal, and that bylaw 52-2024 be read a first, second, and third time in an act of an open council this 12th day of November 2024.
Thank you, Counselor. Go ahead, Zoe.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. As the existing Drain Superintendent is stepping down from their duties, staff have investigated outsourcing Drainage Superintendent services. Staff have spoken with Shade Group, and they are willing to work together to ensure a successful low-cost program. Staff have continued to do many drainage-related tasks in-house, however Shade Group would have the official title, and they would help with the more complex issues, including fieldwork. So we've allocated $30,000 for contracted services. They would also be eligible for the grant of up to 50%. Staff recommend that Shade Group be appointed as Drain Superintendent.
Thank you for that. Any questions, comments? Go ahead, Counselor Madden.
Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor. Just to clarify, if we spend 30, we can get 15 back?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. It does depend on the services. Only certain activities qualify for the grant, so technically, as long as they're only doing duties at bar. However, there are sometimes things that are not covered.
Okay.
But for the most part, yes.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Manley.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Zoe, are there other municipalities, lower-tier municipalities that use this company, or that source out their contract out there drainage?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. The majority actually do outsource to different firms. I don't think anyone in S D and G is using Shade Group, but we have used them as an engineering firm for several projects, and they did have a very good rate. Unlike other companies, they're also not requiring us to a minimum, so we'll contact them when we need them, mostly for fieldwork and for like engineering-related questions, but other than that, there's no cost to the township to appoint them as Drainage Superintendent.
Okay, you said no cost to the township to appoint?
Correct, yes. So we can appoint them, and then as we have issues, so our ideal goal is that staff would try to triage everything in-house, similar to what we're doing now, and then when there's something that we would need their assistance on, at that point, they would charge us, and I believe they included their hourly rate in their proposal.
Yeah.
So the blended cost, I believe, was $98 an hour. So at that point, we would be charged, but just for appointing them, there's no cost.
Yeah, makes sense to me, but I thought that it was the municipality, because is it not a legislated responsibility of municipalities to have a Drainage Superintendent?
Yes, for granting purposes, and to allow the powers under the Drain Superintendent, under the Drain Act, sorry, but it does not have to be a member of staff.
Right, but I thought since we're going to be paying them, we would be the ones that would benefit from the grant.
Yes, sorry, so to clarify, we would be the recipient of the grant.
Ah.
Yes, so we would continue to receive the grant.
Okay.
It is on their time, so they would work with us to fill out the grant application based on their eligible hours, but then we would receive the 50% back, so that would be offset.
Very good, that's excellent. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Madden, and then Counselor Massey.
Just to follow up on the question about anybody using them, in here it says Drainage Superintendent Services, South Dundas, ongoing consultation, so whether that's them trying to get in there, I'm presuming?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Yes, South Dundas actually does have a staff member in-house, but there's several things that staff can't handle, and usually it's a blended position. It's very rare that you see a full-time staff member anymore, so they do have someone in South Dundas, but he does have other responsibilities, I believe he also works for the Water Department.
Gotcha.
So Shade Group, they step in and help, and like I said, they've been very helpful in the lower tier in S D and G, and that's why we investigated working with them.
And we should remember, the report we saw for the drain out near Glen Robertson was from them as well. We've seen stuff from them before.
Yes, there was one from, sorry, in Glen Robertson?
Yeah, the drain, I'm going to say it was about six weeks ago, maybe it was a couple of months ago now, but the last drain report we had was from Shade Group.
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Counselor Massey.
So Zoe, the 42,489 and the 14,215 in benefits total, whatever it is there for, is 56, 57,000, so that's going to come out of the, in our budget as for staff budget?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Yes, so those costs will be removed, and it'll be replaced with a contracted service cost.
Okay, so you'll just put $30,000 in contracted services, so we're actually saving 26,000?
Yes, the, there was a grant allocated, so the grant will also be reduced.
Okay.
But the grant is always one year behind, so we won't see that change until next year, until 2026.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your report, appreciate that. There are no other questions? I'll call the vote, all in favor? Carried and opposed. Thank you, Zoe, it was an excellent report. On to Building, Planning, and Bylaw Department, we have B P 2024-27, Zoning Bylaw Amendment Number Z 07-2024. Counselor Martin, please put it on the table.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Massey, that the council of the township of North Glengarry adopt zoning bylaw number Z 07-2024, and that the bylaw number Z 7-2024 be read a first, second, and third time, and enacted in open council on this 12th day of November 2024.
Thank you, Counselor. Go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So Jacob is off tonight, attending something for one of his kids, so I offered to do his report. I'm not going to be nearly as funny, I'm assuming. So he did send me a couple of notes, so the first one is for 18873 Kenyon Concession Road 5 Alexandria, so this is to rezone the 73 acres from general agricultural to general agricultural special exemption. These are our typical ones that we do. He did let me know that he did receive two phone calls regarding this application from neighboring properties. They wanted to know what could be built on the lots, and he explained that they were for residential agriculture, and that the 73 acres portion could not be developed for residential, so they just wanted to make sure, and they were all satisfied with the answers, and there was no other comments or concerns from the public or any other agencies.
All right, council members, this is your chance to ask Sarah some hard questions.
Fake it till you make it.
Anybody have any questions or comments? No, wow, you're going to get off easy on that one, then. All in favor of the motion? Carried and opposed. Thank you for that, Sarah. On to number two, which is B P 2024-28, Zoning Bylaw Amendment Number Z 08-2024. Counselor Manley, please put it on the table.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Massey, that the council of the township of North Glengarry adopt zoning bylaw number Z 08-2024, and that bylaw Z 08-2024 be read a first, second, and third time, and enacted in open council this 12th day of November 2024.
Thank you, Counselor. Go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So this is for Cedar Ridge Designs, which is located at 18331 Kenyon Concession Road 8 in Maxville. So this is to rezone the, a property from general agricultural special exemption to general agricultural special exemption, and there's an A G 179 to 1, or 252, and to add on diversified uses, farm uses, so that will be a different permitted use on the property. Again, there were no comments or concerns from the public, or neighbors, or agencies, and that's pretty much what that's all about. I think he explained it a little bit more in general during our public meeting, and I think it was pretty self-explanatory at that point.
Yeah, does anybody have any questions they can stop Sarah with on this one?
Okay, good.
No, and in this, I did actually have a question, I'm not making this up at the last minute, but you may not be able to answer it. I'm assuming an expansion of the business is being planned, that's what that, this is all about then, right? Okay, all right, I'll ask Jacob after. Okay, so that's good, are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Carried, none opposed. Thank you, Sarah. Wow, this is a quick one, no unfinished business, there is, in the consent agenda, we have our C A Board of Directors meeting highlights, no new business, notice of motion, what?
We should, yeah.
Oh, we do?
Gary has it.
Oh, oh, I see, okay, well, I've got a blank there, so.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Massey, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives the items from the consent agenda for their information purposes only.
Any comments or questions on that? All in favor of the motion? Carried, thank you. No new business, notice of motion, the next regular meeting of council will be Monday, November the 25th, at 6:00 P. M. Question period, this is your chance. Maybe...
I can say make it public, and then we can talk about it more after.
Yeah, exactly, so, so go ahead. Oh, there's a microphone there.
You were saying that the program was taken out of your hands, is there any, can we, are we allowed to have any more details of that, like why?
Okay, so yeah, you're referring to the recycling.
To the recycling.
Recycling program, yes, and, and yes, so this, you know, was a long, long, long road that the provincial government had set in motion for the Blue Box Program, and basically it is producer responsibility that is going to be taking over the entire program, except some elements of it, such as industrial and commercial, are not being handled under the producer responsibility, and so, you know, we've been doing our best to try to inform both commercial and industrial producers that they'll have to make arrangements in order to have their product taken into a recycling facility or picked up, anyway. And it's a bit of a challenge for us, because we're kind of couting between a rock and a hard place, where we no longer have any control over the recycling whatsoever, and yet, you know, there's been a longstanding expectation from both residents and commercial and industrial that we have been handling it, so communication has gone out on that, but understandably, there's still considerable amount of confusion over where to go, and why, and all of that stuff, so do you have anything, yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, so maybe, I don't know if it came in today in the mail, but I didn't see anything personally at my place of business, so maybe could we, could we as a township maybe make a little bit more Facebook posts and stuff like that, just explaining the situation? I know we probably did some, but there's a lot of people, business owners that are, and then, and this date, January 1st, is coming fast, so we have to make arrangement, you know, I handle a lot of boxes and boxes, stuff, we have to make plans, so just a simple reminder, maybe on Facebook, and then maybe a blitz on Facebook, or whatever, and then just reminding people to get organized, and just maybe explaining the whole, the whole deal, I know we probably did, but most of the people haven't heard nothing about it, so that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, go ahead, Sarah.
Sorry, I just want to have a couple of points of clarification, so, because there have been also some, and Counselor Manley and I were speaking about this before council today, so there were some newspaper articles that went out about recycling, and the fact that Rare is closing, so the township is looking to do some posts, we may do a mail drop for all residential, and maybe even commercial as well, just to clarify some points, because I think there was some miscommunication in the newspaper articles regarding the recycling and Rare. So as was indicated in the, the commercial drop that was just done, I believe, the last couple of days or week, there has been a change to the commercial recycling program, as well as the residential, so, and that is all because of the provincial government. So the provincial government came down and told municipalities, you are no longer responsible for recycling, we have been since the 90s, but now they've taken it back. This has been something that's been in the works for my whole municipal career, and finally they've, they've come through with it. There's two separate components, residential and commercial, so I don't want any of our residents listening right now to think that we're not going to be dealing with, like we're not picking up recycling anymore, or no one's going to pick up the recycling as of January 1st, that's not true. So we, we do know that the producers, producers who are now responsible for recycling for residential, they have a contractor who will be picking up the recycling for residential homeowners, January 1st, it will be seamless, because it will be H T C, our current contractor. So you will see your familiar drivers, and your familiar, I'm assuming, drivers and trucks that will be picking up your cycling as is. What we're not sure right now is exactly what will be picked up and how that will look, but we are looking at getting that information out to residents as soon as we know. But what we're talking about this evening is the commercial standpoint. But, what we're talking about this evening is the commercial standpoint. So, because we can no longer deal with recycling, Rare is being closed, the employees have been notified well in advance, and they also knew it was coming like everyone else in municipal government. And so, the commercial components that we've been covering in North Glengarry, because we have Rare, can no longer happen, which is mainly, as we've discussed, the cardboard and other sort of types of pickup. So, that's something that we had sent out some information to our commercial property owners, just to let them know that this is changing as of January 1st. It's not the decision of myself, as a C I O, Tim, as a Director of Public Works, council, is it something that came from the provincial government? We can no longer do it, unfortunately. So, we do want to work with our businesses in the downtown area, different people, to see what we can do, and we will continue to do that, maybe on an individual basis. So, certainly, we'll, Tim's not here this evening, but we'll speak to him and just let him know that we did have someone come here tonight, and maybe we can have an offline discussion, myself and yourself and Tim, and maybe we want to get together with some of the business owners. Unfortunately, there's not the chamber anymore in Alexandria, which would have been an excellent place for us to go, but certainly doesn't mean we can't all get together. So, maybe that's the best thing to do, go forward. But, again, this is the commercial side that we're, just have a little bit of a hiccup. We're hoping that the residential side will be seamless as of January 1st. But, certainly, for any residents who are watching or listening, please know that we will be sending information about that as well. So, that's, that's sort of what I wanted to say.
And thank you, Sarah, that's really helpful, very helpful. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Sarah, but if we could do it like within a week on Facebook too, because there's a lot, it's with the Rare announcement last week, like, I know Jamie, our mayor, responded, like, calmed down a lot of people's nerves, just explaining the whole situation, it's just that there hasn't been an official post from us. Could we have one like that?
Absolutely, Counselor Massey, we can. We're just trying to get exactly what we want to say, because we know...
Okay.
That when, that's why with the commercial, we wanted to get the right information out to them, and that's why, unfortunately, we're not getting all the information from the producers. We just found out that they have contracted it out to H T C, but there will be an in-between company. So, as of January 1st, if your recycling's not picked up, unfortunately, you can't call the township about that. However, your garbage isn't picked up, you call us. So, it's a little bit confusing. There's going to be some hiccups and bumps along the way, I think we'll all get through it, but certainly, we're just trying to get the information, because it's, we're just getting it as we go through. So, what we weren't wanting to do was sending out something on social media or in a mail drop, that would just create more, more questions rather than provide answers.
Understand. A lot of people look concerned.
Yeah, and certainly, not our choice to close Rare at all, so that was...
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Manley.
Thank you. Just, I had another, a person approached me and asked me about hazardous waste and about the leaf, the leaf pickup and that kind of thing, and I said to them that I, from my understanding, that would continue to go ahead.
Yes, absolutely, yeah. So, those two things will continue to be provided.
By the municipality.
By the municipality, those are things that we are allowed to continue to do, yeah. So, we will be having the Household Hazardous Waste Day, and we may look at maybe something a little bit more, because I believe there may be certainly people who may be dropping things off at Rare. Those are some of the things we're going to have to be learning about what maybe Rare was to residents, and... Yeah, so we'll, we'll be able to work through that, I think, and, because we're not planning on selling the building right away, or not in the near future anyways, so we'll work through that.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for your comments, and if it's okay with you, we'll take this conversation further offline? Okay, excellent. I think we'll, you know, we need to do whatever we can to try to ease, ease during this, you know, business owners such as yourself during this difficult transition. Okay, so, thanks, everyone, for that. We have no closed session tonight. The confirmation bylaw, please, Counselor Madden.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Excuse me, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry adopts bylaw 53-2024, being a bylaw to adopt, confirm, and ratify matters dealt with by resolution, and that bylaw 53-2024 be read a first, second, and third time and enacted in open council this 12th day of November 2024.
Thank you, Counselor Madden. All in favor of the motion? Carried, thank you. And adjournment, Counselor Massey.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Deputy Mayor Williams. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Manley, there being no further business to discuss, the meeting was adjourned at 6:30 P. M.
Well, that was a quick one, thank you, Counselor Massey, all in favor? And that's carried. And so, thank, I'd like to thank Sarah, and staff, and Zoe, and members of the public for joining us this evening, and councilor members, and everybody have a good evening. Thank you.